Good evening. Can everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call, we're all here except for Chris. Any changes to the agenda?
Just two items of note, not necessarily changes for the agenda, but one, we did send notices out for another item, a conditional use permit request. That was going to be for a pool hall and game room in a tenant space at 145 Division Street. We had sent notice out and after that time, the applicant withdrew that request, so we will not be reviewing that tonight. It was too late to send notices to the same property owners, but it doesn't appear there is anyone here for that particular request, I don't think. And just a little bit of a housekeeping item, just to be sure, we're speaking into the mics or staying pretty close to the mics or when we do the minutes, trying to pick up everything we can.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
All same side. Approved with all present. Minutes from August fifteenth, 2024. Any changes or?
I would move for approval of the minutes from the August fifteenth meeting.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor, single was saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Minutes approved. Term use permit. Wade Park Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at City Hall, 19 13th Avenue North at 6:30 or soon after on Tuesday, October eighth, 2024, to hear the following request. Request of Brandine Dillon Kramer Garden LLC and Thomas Adolph for consideration of interim use permit for a solar electric generation facility in an A1 agricultural residential district. Public hearing opened at 6:33.
Chair Jansky, planning commission members, folks in the audience, anyone watching at home. This request again has been submitted for what's being known as Kramer Garden LLC on behalf and with permission of Tom and Susie Adolph, who are the property owners of this subject property, to allow an interim use permit for a four megawatt, that's a typo, whereas it says five a couple times in the report. It's actually four megawatt standalone solar electric generating facility, and that's in an A1 agricultural rural residential district vicinity of 2992 County Road 137 on the eastern side of the road and to the north of the Adolph's existing home there. Per the A1 ag rural residential district standards, solar electric generating facilities are considered an interim use and may be permitted with conditions for a set period of time upon review by Planning Commission and approval of the city council. You may recall, some years ago, I believe it was 2019, we updated the solar ordinance to place some additional location criteria and restrictions on solar facilities and bulk up some of the application process. We're able to more thoroughly and adequately review those applications. Also, you may recall, it's been about a year now, but maybe just under. The proposal received approval for several setback variances from the applicable solar facility ordinance in late 2023, but the proposed footprint, you may jog your memory a little bit. It was reviewed a couple of times by Planning Commission, and there was some back and forth with kind of a proposed footprint that ultimately won Planning Commission's support and was ultimately narrowly approved by the city council. The current proposed site plan falls within that approved established footprint for the solar panels, and the setbacks to the neighboring properties have in fact been reduced in several areas throughout the site. On map here is just a general location map we put for reference for when we sent out notices, but I'm going to scroll down to the approved and the proposed footprint. You can see, maybe tough a little bit on the screens there, but there's two overlapping footprints here. The areas that are in black, you can see mostly around the periphery. Those were the approved footprint. The area in blue is what's now being proposed. Everything does stay outside of that 400-foot setback from adjacent properties and does reduce the impacts potentially to or any visibility aspects for some neighboring properties. There's only a handful of properties that are immediately adjacent to this parcel, just given the size and scope of the property, but just wanted to lay that out for you. I would add that the proposed, or excuse me, the approved setback variances that were approved by the city council last year, they pertain only to the actual solar panels. There are options for fencing and landscaping outside of that footprint. That is acceptable. Those are things that could be undertaken by any time from any property owner without much in the way of special approval. They're not under necessarily the purview of having explicit permission required. I think most folks are generally familiar with the idea of the community solar garden, but this is, excuse me, part of an Excel Energy program that's been approved and supported by the state to provide for ongoing supply of renewable energy. Focuses on a subscription-based option for properties that may be unable to install solar facilities upon their own property. Again, this site would be a five, or excuse me, four megawatt total of power, and the land would continue to be owned by the Adolph family with the lease to Nacomis Energy for the project duration. There's nothing that would preclude any sale of the property. The Adolphs could sell their property anytime. That would simply transfer. As long as everything stays static with the approvals, those run with the property. So the Adolphs are not locked into owning the property forever. They certainly maintain the ability and right to transfer that to someone else at any time. The requested project duration and the interim use permit request is from beginning of solar operations. Once construction is completed, the applicants requested a term of 35 years. I am a little uncomfortable with that 35-year term. I believe that may be exceptionally long. You may, a few of you that have served on the Planning Commission long enough have seen several other solar projects come through. Typically, that term has been 25 years for an initial approval, at least, with the option that they could come back and request to extend if that timeline runs up and there's no major development or pressing concerns with the property. I would be more comfortable with 25 years, given this area has been established as a delineated growth corridor for the city. And the intent of the interim use permits is to allow for some sort of limited use for the property until they're more realistically ready for development. So again, I'd be recommending an initial term of 25 years, after which an extension could be considered by a future iteration of the Planning Commission and the city council. They would take into effect the, take into account the surrounding area. What's the development status? What's their comfort level with potentially extending that? The equipment itself has a useful life, approximately 35 years projected. If the project would receive city approval, it would be potentially, construction is starting in early 2026, would be kind of a best-case scenario. There is some lead time on some of the equipment involved, and there's a number of additional regulatory aspects that the project has to go through. So it's, ends up being kind of a hurry up and wait for the project if they do receive approval from the city council. The total proposed array is outlined on the site plan here. It's a total of 9,075 solar panels with a footprint of 19.7 acres of property. The racking system and panels are of a single-axis tracking variety, so they basically tilt up-down. Overall height of approximately 10 feet, with the bottom of panels about four feet from grade, give or take. That may fluctuate a little bit throughout the site. The entirety of the layout is subject to engineering and final Excel program approval and may change slightly prior to construction, but will be subject to review and approval by both City of Wade Park staff as well as the potentially Sauk River Watershed District and Stearns County for any wetland aspects. And Stearns County has already been involved with wetland components, so there's, everything's shaping up well there. The entirety of the property would be fenced and landscaping, consisting of arborvitae, tree plantings, and New Jersey tree shubs. Is proposed for areas nearest adjacent properties that don't have existing vegetation or trees that can be utilized. The city ordinance that we enacted does allow basically credit or using existing vegetation and trees, provided they're maintained as landscaping. I'm not necessarily a believer that it does a lot of good to do additional planting if it's just going to be redundant. Much of this site is surrounded by existing old growth wooded areas in which plantings, additional plantings may be unnecessary. Primary site access and maintenance will be done via proposed gravel road with access from existing 12th Street South and 23rd Avenue South area, kind of the northeastern portion of the property. I have had contact with at least one property owner in the southern area regarding landscaping in that area. I did take a look there, and in my interpretation, I would think that the layout of the facility in that area and the existing vegetation, which includes larger trees, both along the the adjacent property and along the Adolph driveway and the trees running kind of in a diagonal north and south there, this area down here. I think that provides a pretty good existing screening buffer from the adjacent property to the southwest there. Additionally, the orientation of that particular home and the associated large pole shed would most likely prohibit a lot of visibility from that particular residence of any portion of the proposed solar array. If you, if you go to a corner of the property, you may be able to see it, but I think, you know, looking out the front window, you're probably unlikely to see much in the way of anything there. The equipment pad is proposed to be at the southern and central portion of the array, which is furthest away from any neighboring properties as possible. A good location for that. The ground area underneath the array is proposed to have pollinator-friendly, low-growth native grasses, forbs, and flowers. Maintenance plan has been submitted as part of that application and is acceptable to the city. The applicants have supplied all the necessary data and documentation related to the proposal as per the applicable city ordinance related to solar facilities. Our staff members have reviewed it kind of collectively, and we haven't identified any concerns related to glare or any environmental impacts. And the applicants have actually gone above and beyond the standards in considering of any potential wildlife impacts, of which there was no concerns identified. Again, they've been coordinating with Stearns County staff regarding wetland aspects. Project is deemed feasible, but they will need continued coordination and potential permitting there, but that's a pretty standard fare. Again, we've not, city staff members haven't identified any concerns with the technical or structural aspects at this time, although if the project would move forward, we would need standard review and permitting processes that are involved. Circling back a little bit to what I discussed earlier, typically, initial interim use permit approval under ordinance is valid for one year from date of issuance per city ordinance. However, given the substantial timelines associated with the interconnection agreements with Excel Energy and the lead times for manufacturing and delivery of the major components, the applicants are requesting an allowance of 2.5 years to begin construction or up to. I would be supportive of this request as a factors impacting those applicants are outside their control or influence, and it would save unnecessary expenditure of city resources and staff time to further review, provided there's no major changes are proposed. Moving to my recommendation of conditions of approval. I would recommend approval of the interim use permit to allow a four-megawatt solar array for this property as per the submitted plans with the following conditions. Condition one, site and landscape plans, including plantings of noted arborvitae trees at minimum six-foot height planting size, shall be implemented as submitted and reviewed unless otherwise approved by City of Wade Park Planning and Community Development Director. Modifications or deviations deemed minor may be approved administratively, provided they are still within the overall allowable footprint as approved of previous variances. Modifications deemed major may require additional review and approval by Planning Commission and City Council at discretion of Planning and Community Development Director. Number two, a financial or decommissioning guarantee shall be furnished to the City of Wade Park in the amount of $383,000 in form of bond, letter of credit, or other financial mechanism as may be deemed acceptable by the City of Wade Park Finance Director. Such financial guarantees shall be kept current throughout duration of interim use permit term. Shall reflect any change of ownership operator and any future heirs or assigns, and shall not be released by City of Wade Park unless an acceptable replacement is supplied or until decommissioning is performed to city satisfaction. Number three, all necessary building, land disturbance, and electrical permits shall be obtained prior to project commencement. Number four, approval of Sauk River Watershed District for finalized project configuration shall be submitted at time of building permit application. Number five, application for building permit shall demonstrate compliance with applicable Stearns County and Wetland Conservation Act aspects. Number six, initial interim use permit approval is deemed to not lapse, provided construction commences by June 1, 2027. If construction is not commenced by that time, additional review or consideration of interim use permit may be required by Planning Commission and City Council. Number seven, use of facility shall cease by January 1, 2053, or 25 years from completion of facility and commencement of operations, whichever comes first. Number eight, unless an extension to interim use permit is approved by City of Wade Park, the site shall be fully decommissioned and returned to vacant property by June 1, 2054. If decommissioning is not performed in accordance with city-approved plans or authorizations by applicants, owners, or their future heirs or assigns, city reserves right to draw on financial guarantee to ensure completion of decommissioning. City will release financial guarantees only upon confirmation of full decommissioning to city satisfaction. We've had two additional conditions that I've put in place as well. Those would come next, just regarding maintenance of vegetation. Number nine, existing trees and vegetation around perimeter of property and not part of approved project footprint should not be removed or otherwise disturbed unless explicitly approved by Planning and Community Development Director. Lastly, number 10, any removal of existing vegetation, either by purposeful action or accident or natural cause, may necessitate replacement as per discretion of Planning and Community Development Director to satisfy applicable screening requirements. Those would be my recommendations for conditions of approval. Can open it up for questions or discussions.
John, I have a question with regard to the length of the interim use permit. You said the initial permit would be 25 years, and then it could be approached to be extended.
Yes.
Are you saying that the limit of the extension would be 10 years or totaled 35 years?
No, no.
The extension would not be limited?
The, our ordinance does not set hard limits on terms like, for example, our quarry or quarry and material extraction does. That's a little different, so you may be more familiar with that because we've seen a number of those. I was comfortable with 25 years to start, and then at that time, we could revisit it. If they, if, it would be, you know, you don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know what the conditions will be like surrounding that. That would be up to a future city council and planning commission, but they could say either, no, we're not going to extend it, that area is ripe for development now, or if nothing has happened nearby, if they're comfortable with extending it for another 10 or 25, they could. The useful life of the equipment as it is, is 35 years. That's kind of where they came up with that, with that number.
Thank you.
Thank you for the background, John. This is a public hearing. If anybody wants to speak for or against, please come up and state your name at the podium.
Hello, my name is Fritz Ebbinger. I'm with Nacomis Energy. I'm the project developer for this garden. I want to thank staff for the time and the effort that they put into reviewing the application. It was about a 220-page application to page through, including all the reports. That's a significant amount of staff time. We appreciate the evaluation that you provided. Couple of things I wanted to mention. This is a true community solar garden program, so it's been admitted to the Minnesota Department of Commerce LMI program, which specifically serves public interest subscribers like schools, faith communities, and affordable housing developments. I also wanted to add that it will add about $8,500 to the tax roll every year for you because of the land characterization changes from agricultural land to a different land use. So the tax, inbound tax revenue increases. In our experience, most communities use that for schools or they use that for public developments, either parks or sometimes roads. Couple of things, I was pretty meticulous in reading through the notes, through the hearings that happened last fall, wanted to point out that we're not cutting any trees down on this garden. We typically don't like to do that because it triggers concerns about certain species like northern long-eared bats, so we're staying entirely inside the, entirely inside the tilled farmland. Other than that, I welcome any questions you have. One last comment on me because we always request 35 years in our permits because that reflects the standard contract. The standard ground lease is 25 years with two five-year extensions. So when we do go into a hearing, we simply request the 35 years on the front end, recognizing that the city might have other timelines in mind. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Feel free to call me back to the podium if you have.
Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Hi, my name is Lori Schultz. I have a couple of questions with regards to what was proposed last fall when they were pursuing the variance. They presented as if this entire garden circumference was going to be having a buffer for visual, and now when it comes before us today, almost all of that has been eliminated. I see that in the plans, they have arborvitae plantings to the one property that is on this northwest area. They have arborvitae there. And then they have arborvitae along the flipstick property line as well as the roadway. Is there a reason why they don't have any landscaping along, further down on County Road 137? I know there is, I'll call them scrub trees, covers part of the garden, but not the balance of the roadway vision. Is there a reason why that roadway area would not have vegetation covering the visual? Or is it overlooked?
I would believe that, just given the curvature of the roadway there, you know, when a car is, depending on which direction they're coming from, you're not going to eliminate, you know, absolutely every visibility of the array. That's not the expectation, but if a car is coming southbound, you know, they're going to see those arborvitae that are planted, and then the flipstick property has a fair number of trees surrounding it. By the time they get past the flipstick property, then they're looking forward and not necessarily going to see a ton of the solar panels if you're southbound. Likewise, going northbound, you know, there is that tree line there. I took a look, and I believe those trees are in sufficient condition that they do an adequate job of fulfilling the purpose of blocking, you know, the majority of visibility from that side. There certainly could be a gap if someone's heading northbound where it can be seen, but I think it's pretty minimal.
So likewise, the Johnson property that is right in line, looking across what's currently a cornfield on that southwest corner, the feeling is from their property line, they're not going to be seeing that solar?
There's no requirement in ordinance that it has to be absolutely invisible to every neighboring property. The idea was to minimize impacts to the properties that are immediately surrounding.
Okay, so I know earlier you mentioned my property, that because of the pole shed, my view is blocked. I see over my shed, totally. I mean, I'm accustomed seeing wildlife out there, deer, turkey, et cetera. This is having a big impact on the wildlife that is there currently. Granted, I know through development, it's inevitable. I will share with you, when there were parties on my property doing the measurements, they made a comment to me that has stuck, and that is, they're saying this is the first time in their experience in the state of Minnesota, that a city has approved a solar farm within its city limits, that they're willing to give a variance on the distance from residential properties. Are we, I mean, I know it's passed, but is there any going back in considering that? Or is there any repercussions on us allowing it?
No, if it was approved, it's approved.
Okay.
There's no, there's no mechanism to go back.
Okay. Just wanted to bring up my points. Thank you.
Would like to speak for or against?
Tom Adolph, and obviously the co-applicant on it. And I thank especially John and the city for a lot of hard work that took place here. I didn't know it was literally 220 pages, so that even gives me greater appreciation. I just want to just bring up, I guess, the thing about the length, the 25 versus 35 years. The variance is surely really kind of got us on a financial basis because it was about a 30% reduction in things when we did that. And now looking at 35 versus 25, it's another maybe 25%. It's a pretty significant financial impact, at least from the way we see the potential financial impact. So, you know, I've been out there now. I first came in contact with this property when I met Susie and we got married, and so I've been around her for about 35 years. started, met Suzie and we got married, and so I've been around it for about 35 years myself, and nothing's changed in 35 years. The surrounding property, if you look, one side is the Quarry Park now, our house. On the east side is a residential property that'll stay that way, Bill's, Buccaneers Place, and then on the north side, of course, that's a tree lined with industrial, I believe, on a good portion of that right there. So a lot of that's going to be, you know, always be that way, and just consideration to see if the, if there's any sort of compromise or anything like that between the 25 and 35 years. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up and speak?
I'll just make a couple of comments. This is not the first time that solar gardens have been permitted in a city. City of Scandia has done it, City of Faribault has done it. I could probably dig up another list, but it's actually a known practice where cities will purposely reserve areas for later development to develop a solar garden inside the city limits.
Sam Johnson, I guess one comment I will make in regards to a potential compromise on the 25 to 35 years, is I believe I met Tom and Suzie in 2019. It was two, possibly earlier, it was 2018 or 2019 when we began marketing the property for sale, for lease, anything. It's 2024 now, we're five years in, easily could be another year before any meaningful construction takes place on something like this. That puts us at six years, so maybe it's something where 30 years, 35 years is given, where that can be used on a financial basis, but they have to begin marketing or putting a plan together or something prior to that, because we all know any sort of commercial land development can take, I mean, on the short side, it's three years, five years, and in excess of that, and there's other, multiple other people in this room that have been trying to market and sell their property for 10-plus years or whatever it might be. So there could be something like that, I'm not sure if, what the trigger could be, but it's just a thought on my side.
I would just add, you know, for the planning commission and folks in the audience and for the applicants, you know, when, when the city is looking at this, we're not concerning ourselves with your financials. I mean, I'm just going to be cut and dry. I respect what you're trying to do, and, you know, obviously it makes more sense, and if, if I could step in the future for five minutes and look and see, and 35 years passes and there's nothing nearby, great, you get 35 years, but I don't have that ability. So we have to look at it from a land use perspective of safeguarding a little bit. You know, we're looking at decisions here that will impact, again, future iteration of the staff. I may not be here, everyone in this room may not be here, I don't know. So we, when we look at that, I built 25 years is kind of what the maximum of my comfort level was at that, and I hedge on that a little bit even. I know when this was up last year, there was some talk about even 15 to 20, and I know that's probably not viable, so 25 is kind of the best middle ground I could come up with. You know, when, with all these solar projects, the concern has always been tying up too much property for a generation, when frankly Wade Park does not have a whole lot of good development property, especially property like in this area that is, has services available nearby. I know they're deep, but they're there, and someone could get after them if they wanted to. Again, you know, same thing, a tryst goes to the north, just because it hasn't happened doesn't mean it won't, and we can't, we can't work on every history and say because it hasn't happened, it won't for the next 20, 25. So that, that was where we came from, and because the history we've had with our handful of other solar projects, we, projects we've approved, has been on that 25-year term, and that's kind of where that comfort level is with the planning commission, or has been historically, and that's what ultimately has, has been approved in most cases by the city council as well, so that, that's where that number came from. That's about the furthest horizon I could, I could get around with my comfort level. And again, if I, if I, if this was further out in an area that didn't need variances or anything, you might get 35. That might, wouldn't be as a concern, but being on kind of that fringe area where we would like to see development at some point in the relatively near future, and just because it hasn't happened, doesn't mean we stop trying to get it. That 25-year stretch is about as much as I can stomach and still be comfortable.
The other ones that are in town, the solar gardens, they were all based on 25 years?
Yeah, that's, that's my recollection as well.
Anybody else like to speak for or against?
Hearing anyone step forward, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second to motion.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, pass with all present.
I'd make a motion to approve the interim permit as written, with the conditions provided by John through 10, with 25 years.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second.
Yeah. I would like a question first, though, could we somehow add language in here that we would encourage the extension if there are no violations to the, to the, at the end of 25 years, we would encourage the extension if there are no violations to the permit?
I don't know that, as much as I, I'm on the surface, that's well-intended, I don't know that that's probably the best play, just because there's, we're stepping into a world of unknowns. If we don't know what the conditions are going to be like, or what, what the goals or interests of a future planning commission or city council or city staff would be, I would just rather leave that to them in the future to deal with as they may. I don't want someone to come back and say they, you know, in 2024, they recommended extension, and it's pinned to that somehow. I think we just have to let the, let those chips fall however they may, and let them make that call in the future when that time comes up.
25 years is a long ways out, and if they decide they want to make, you know, apply for extension, everybody else would be under the same condition, whether it's a granite or whatever it is. If they need to extend, they ask for extension, you know, they come on petition for it, so I don't see any need to add any more language to it. 25 years is a good spent.
We just have no idea what the future holds. I mean, best-case scenario for them, there's, best-case scenario for them is that there's nothing nearby and it looks more or less like it does today. It's not the great scenario for the city, but it would be great for them, and in that case, there would probably be no reason why they, why they wouldn't extend it, but that's, that's for someone in diapers to decide.
Hold a question?
I would, I would second the motion then.
We got a motion and a second already. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
We would expect that this item will go to the city council for their Monday, October 21st meeting. That will be at 6:30 PM in this room. There's no further public hearing involved, this has fulfilled the public hearing component for this request, so the final review by the city council will be on the regular agenda for that meeting, barring any, anything unforeseen, but I'll certainly keep you posted, but for anyone, the meeting is public, there's just no further public hearing on it.
Gail for common, is there any staff updates?
I don't have anything for this month. Typically, when we're in election season, we have to be a little bit wary of having to potentially move the meetings for November, but the way it falls, if we have any applications for November, we should be okay if it doesn't fall on Election Day this, this year, or anything associated with elections, so. I'm not aware of any pending applications, so you may get the month off anyway, but we'll see.
I would move for adjournment.
Second.
Motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, begin and adjourn 7.